Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of our webinar series, Learning from Liaisons, Evictions, ARP Strategies and More. Thank you for joining us if you've joined us in the past. And of course, welcome if this is your first time joining us. We took a little bit of a hiatus and I know some people were probably missing the series. I did as well, but here we are back again. And we have a great presentation lined up for you all today. I promise. And just before we jump into the start of the presentation and I turn it over to our wonderful guest today. I just want to do a couple of housekeeping things so that everyone knows that if you have questions throughout the presentation, you can look to the right-hand side of your screen and you can go to the questions panel in the questions pane in the GoToWebinar control panel. And you can drop your questions there and we will be sure to get to them and answer as best as we can. This webinar is also going to be recorded or it's being recorded currently. And you will be able to find it on our website under archived webinars and that's schoolhouseconnection.org/archive-webinars. And it will also be sent to everyone in their inbox. So you can look out for it within the next day or two as well. And of course, the materials, which is the presentation on the PowerPoint, you'll be able to access those as well. So I think that's everything for this housekeeping. So without further ado, I will turn it over to our panelist today, Mr. Tyler Schu Smith, who is joining us from Northeast ISD in San Antonio, Texas. So Tyler, take it away.
Well, thank you, Eileen. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. This is super exciting. Schoolhouse Connection has been a near and dear partner for us over the years. And it is great to be able to be part of one of these presentations again. You know, some of our best business in school business has been to beg and borrow and steal from other districts and best practices and things. So I'm hoping that maybe someone who's, you know, part of this audience would, you know, benefit for some of the things that we're thinking about doing, some of the things we're currently doing. And some of the, I guess, the dreamy ideas that we have for certain projects that I think that would, you know, definitely help our kiddos out. Some of the things that if you see that are something you want to dive deeper into, you're feel free to reach out to me. I'm going to hopefully be able to provide my contact information at the end of it. Feel free to email me and we can definitely collaborate on other things. Should you want to implement some of the work that we're doing here? Because you know, if I can't share it with you, then there's really no point in doing all this work. So with that, Eileen, if you can go to the next slide, please. So we're talking about putting all the pieces together, right? So we're looking at the pandemic. We have multiple different venues that are inflicting and conflicting with our work. We have, you know, the housing moratorium, which was in place for a very long time, almost 18, 19 months. You know, it was dropped for a little bit, then brought back up. And then we had the moratorium ending two months ago. And we're starting to see the beginnings of the fallout from that. And so one of our biggest concerns is that we have an unknown population of families that have moved away out of our, out of our school district in two different parts of the city, other cities, and actually out of state and out of country. One of the hats that I wear in the district is I manage dropouts. And that is one thing that we have seen this year is that we had an inordinate amount of dropouts that kids that we couldn't find or kids refusing to come back to school. And families who had been relocated to other areas because they were either downsizing or in lost housing. The, some of the expanse of that loss of housing has been everything from, you know, landlords unwilling to negotiate, landlords just flatly ignoring the law and kicking them out. And then also we've had them living with other families to a multitude where there's really so many folks that have had to move to another place. And what we see is that there's like a multiple tiering of how these, these families become homeless. As we've all know through the business, but we actually kind of see it in more detail at this moment because you have families who are on their own, knowing they're going to be evicted at some point, fearing that eviction, they'd leave, move in with another family. And then from that point, they leave and move in with another family if they're able to, or they maybe start seeking out a shelter. But that process takes a period of, you know, nine to 10 to 12 months for them to go all the way through. By the time they've actually become, you know, uniquely homeless or absolutely homeless, where they're, you know, going to a shelter to seek resources and support. So think about when the moratorium ended, when landlords could actually file those evictions here in San Antonio, a lot of the municipal courts, they were the only people that were actually holding back the evictions being processed. So they had a stack of them sitting there on the judge's desk and they've, they've basically decided to uphold the moratorium, even though there was a federal law that said they shouldn't. They held on to them, but now they're being processed right through. So think about that for, you know, it's going to go out nine to 10 months before we really see the true fallout where families are now finally destitute. And they're going to have to, you know, start leveraging whatever remaining resources they have with having not accessed all the resources that are currently in there. So putting that into perspective for us, you know, we have a big job ahead of us. And we all thought that this is all going to happen a year ago. Like we're going to be, you know, jumping to action, supporting families and getting engaged with them. But our numbers continue to be low because the fallout is trickling down at the moment. It hasn't really fully set in. So we're luckily having a chance to be preparatory in our measures to be able to ensure that we have things in place for whenever that does happen while also serving the families that are currently homeless with us. Eileen, next slide, please. So trying to prioritize some of these things, you know, Eileen's had sent a few questions to us as to what this might look like for us and what I can possibly share. So this may look like a hodgepodge of things or a myriad of things that, you know, they are very much interrelated, but these are some tiers of things that we felt that were most important. So hopefully today we'll be able to cover some of these things that will meet your needs. But one of our, our things was looking at how are we meeting basic needs? You know, above and beyond what we currently do for homeless families. Because once we identify them, we get them into our system. We work with the campuses to get all the kiddos enrolled. They then work with counselors and the family specialists on each counselor, on each campus, and then providing all that wraparound support. But what on top of that can we possibly do that's going to be able to sustain them to be successful? But also to ensure that we're meeting other needs. So what is that food, water, shelter, right? So shelters being impacted by COVID and distancing, the numbers have been pretty, the numbers of most of the shelters have been capped, but we still have the availability to get families in. I'm touching on this because I think the shelter piece is important because as we see families trickling into the system, we need to make sure the families are there. It's the shelters are moving out into permanent supportive housing. So that, that may make, they make space for the next family who's coming through. Mental health obviously is a huge thing. It was one, one of our priorities here in the district, I say was, is, has been a priority in our district for the last couple of years. And in Texas, we were very lucky and our district is very lucky to be one of the pilots for T-Chat, which is one of the worst acronyms of all time. It's the Texas Child Health Accessing Through Telemedicine, but long drawn out. But it's our partnership with UT Health Science Center. And they provide telepsychiatry for our kiddos for free, up to eight to 10 visits. They do initial, initial diagnosis, they do med management. And these are masters level psychiatrists and also LPCs for counseling. We have a very good support system that way they can actually be seen on campus. So I'll tell you a little bit more about that when we get through this presentation. The next one is looking at our community referral resources and the sources are where they come from. So luckily, we've had a great partnership with the city of San Antonio in the outline area of the county to be able to have the communication and some really down-to-earth conversations about, well, if we have this family and they have these boxes that they check, or we have this family and we have these boxes that they check, how do we get them resources and how do we do it immediately? Or we don't clog the system, but also we also have to respect the safety and health of all the folks. We also have to take a look at, you know, what, what exactly or where is this place located? Or can they do this online? What about the folks who have difficulty navigating computers? Because when we have found is that we had all these wonderful online resources, but folks didn't have the ability, availability or the understanding to be able to navigate the online resource, which made it very difficult for them to get through it. You know, I'd asked one of some of my wonderful liaisons, you know, some questions. It's still, what do we see as barriers? And one of the barriers was literally using a computer. You know, we all take for granted our ability to navigate our phones and whatnot, but a lot of these families, they just don't have the experience because it's not part of their everyday, everyday life. Our biggest thing that we've been trying to push and I'll go into more depth about this during the presentation is prevention services, because a lot of the monies that come down from the federal government and also from the state of Texas, when they received it from the Fed, is for prevention specifically. It isn't for, you know, actual homelessness at the moment, it's for prevention. And then also looking to leverage those monies for eviction prevention. Now, a lot of that work has been done. You've seen it advertised nationally and also locally probably. But are the families who are eligible, have they actually accessed these, these prevention monies? And if they haven't, are the landlords willing to negotiate their eviction based on the monies they possibly might be able to receive? What we found is that some of them have not been willing to negotiate. And that's been the biggest concern for us because you have someone who wants to give them money, but they say, you know what, you didn't pay us, you didn't try to talk to us, you didn't try to negotiate all through these 18 months and now you want to come to us when we have a housing shortage at the moment across the country? Because if you haven't seen the real estate prices for homes are going through the roof, that's all been pressured by, you know, the economy with regards to supplies that are coming in to build new homes. So there aren't a lot of new constructions, you know, because we don't have a lot of it. Only with existing materials they have. So you see some construction, but there isn't a lot of new construction. And then our, our next piece of it is talking about our metropolitan partners. That's our city and county folks. If you're not part of the local homeless agency, you really need to be a part of it. You don't need to be a sitting board member. You don't need to be, you know, a chair of a working group, but you definitely need to be in the, in the audience and be an attendee, talk, go into the city council meetings once in a while and seeing exactly what they're saying with regards to the citywide plan. Every city has a citywide homeless plan or they have an idea of what that might be. And if they don't, that's something that you need to be an advocate for. If we're in this business, we definitely need to be advocates for the work that's going on. I'm lucky enough where I've been involved with South Alamo Regional Alliance for Homelessness, otherwise known as SARAH. And the irony about SARAH is everybody thinks SARAH is a person. It's actually, it's a lot of folks really. And Kate Abella is the executive director there. And I'm lucky enough to be able to sit on the board. This happened this last year and I've been a chair of the working group for homeless youth for the last couple of years. Me being there has allowed me to have a lot of insight as to what the city is doing with regards to the work with prevention, allowing me access also to a lot of the resources that the city is trying to push out to the families, but also allowing them access into the school side of the house where we have the availability to talk to, you know, almost 300,000 people, you know, on our social media sites. Because that's how many people interact with our social media with regards to just our chunk of the city. We're one of 17 school districts in San Antonio. You know, our population's 1.6, 1.7 million. And so we have 17 different school districts. Our district has about 61,000 students in it. And so with that, you multiply that plus the families, we're touching a lot of folks. And so having the companionship of all the other school districts, plus the work we're doing with the city, that's a lot of additional layers of communication that we can provide. And that's super critical for us to be able to continue to push out those prevention measures and that money. Our next piece is law enforcement. This is not necessarily a homeless related topic, but this is something that's really near and dear to my heart with it comes to making sure that we have the opportunity to work with kiddos who are, you know, possibly on the verge of being homeless because of law enforcement related things that are going on. This is everything from domestic abuse to witnessing homicides to, you know, being involved in, you know, tragic car accidents. How beneficial would it be to you as a school district official to receive a notice that night that this individual kid has been exposed to a traumatic event the night before? How would you receive that kiddo the next day? And what's going on with that family the next day as well? When you have a domestic abuse issue, one of the spouse partners is going to be leaving the next day. And that means they're going to be moving out of that home, obviously, and going to a temporary place at a women's shelter or going, you know, to a friend's house where they're going to be doubled up. Both manners are going to be qualifying for us. And so that's how I felt it really related to this topic. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that here in just a moment. And then the last piece, you need to automate everything. You know, automation is super key to streamline in the process. I was very lucky to have a few folks in the office that are very well-versed when it comes to this program we call Qualtrics. And also many people who are in school business know Blackboard. Blackboard is one of the main communication devices that we send out mass messages to. But we utilize it on our website in order to have our student residency questionnaire right there and it's mobile friendly. So all you have to have is the link to get you there. And you can go and fill out the actual student residency questionnaire. And that gives you instant contact to us. It's available in English and Spanish and we have other options for other languages as well. All right, next slide, please. So one of the first things we did over the first couple of months of the pandemic was look at how do we send out information to our families? Because people were starting to lock down, we were locking down and families weren't moving. And even, you know, regardless of what their living situation was, they were still going to be learning from that hotel motel or from the shelter or wherever it might be. We wanted to be sure that whatever media that they were using, that our message would make it through to them in order for them to understand what is, what is the next step? Because I don't know about y'all, but I don't watch the news anymore. You know, I don't, if it's on a website, I might read it, but I don't watch TV news anymore. So I get a lot of news from other resources and I imagine a lot of other families do too. So we wanted to be sure that what we're doing is we're communicating with our families on a regular basis. And we found that these QR codes are super helpful when it comes to, you know, family just being able to take their phone and scan it off a TV or scan it off our social media and be able to access this directly. So what you have here is on the right-hand side, this is one of the latest things. This is SARAH's South Alamo Regional Alliance for Homelessness. This is their HomeLink program. So this is a suitcase tag. Basically, you can kind of see the little outline of the hole at the top. But basically, we, we had it to give out to some of our staff members at each of our campuses so that they would be able to scan it every time they have a family in front of them. And it takes you directly to SACRED, excuse me, to SARAH's webpage, but also to SACRED, which is the San Antonio Resource Directory, Community Resource Directory. And that is, it's a, it's a geolocator. So you can type in where you are or a zip code and you can tell them what exactly you need. I need food, I need emergency this, I need a shelter. And it'll tell you the closest location within your geographic area to be able to get you there. And so that's one of the best pieces about this. The hotline is also something that we've come to realize is that it's the most important way for the families to get connected. So if you're familiar with the way HUD and everyone, the Housing Urban Development on the federal side, how they do business, then you'll know that there's different definitions for homelessness and they have what they call coordinated entry. And coordinated entry is where lots of folks go to one spot and that individual, which is like a navigator says, okay, we're going to walk down the list of things and I'm going to ask you questions. Are you a veteran? Are you a single parent? Have you been involved in domestic abuse? Whatever boxes you check, they're going to select inside their system. And then all the providers in the city, all the different nonprofits that from the boxes that you check are going to contact you with that information to be able to help you get off the street or get out of your situation and be able to provide resources for you, whether it's eviction prevention money or if it's, you know, getting into the shelter or if it's getting into a food pantry, whatever it might be. Those resources, they'll contact them. So what we found is that hotline has been the best coordinated entry for our folks here in the city. Because like I said before, some of them have, you know, significant issues when it comes to like working with a computer. And we wanted them to be able to talk to a real person and then, you know, because imagine trying to do something when you've got like six or seven kids in a hotel room with another spouse that may be not related to you. And then another family might be staying with you or whatever the environment is. It's not stressful at all, right? It is, it's super quiet, everybody's doing their thing, you're all doing homework and everybody, like, no, absolutely not. It's like the most chaotic thing of all time. So you want to be able to talk to somebody, not trying to like figure out how to read through another website to get to another webpage that seems to take you down a dumb rabbit trail where you can't seem to get the resources that you need. This is a live person, they're going to connect you. And so this has been one of the most beneficial things for us so far that I've seen the city use and it's been given to us. And so we've been giving them out to our campuses. Next one, please. So this is something I shared with Schoolhouse Connections. One of our awesome liaisons, Chrissy Wired, sent this out on her Twitter. And I think one of y'all, so one of you folks over there had picked it up and, and saw this. And we've been using this as one of the best practices of, you know, we know that families need immediate information. Like we have the hotline, we have, you know, the availability to be able to go to websites. But we had to keep sending out information to families. And the reason why I say this and I'm kind of harping on it is because we found that a lot of our families were like deer cotton headlights. You know, the families who had never previously been homeless that didn't know how to access the resources that they, that are a family that we typically see on a regular basis. You can, you know, the folks that you work with on it. On occasion, you have a family that kind of cycles in and out of homelessness and you're continuously working with them. Some families, they pop into homelessness and you just never see them again because they're absolutely resilient, they have, they've understood what's going on. They got their feet out from, they got their feet underneath them and they're able to navigate the system. We have some families who don't even know how to do that. And so one of the things that we continue to push out, and this one is interesting because it was October 2nd, and that date kept changing. And so we kept updating the flyer to send out the new updated flyer for resources. But we wanted to keep pushing it out to our community so that they would know that, look, it's, it's okay to make these phone calls, it's okay to work ahead before you've actually been evicted. And then we worked pretty closely with our communications department. And so we have a, we're lucky enough to have, I think, two or three people that actually just, all they do is social media. Because what we realized is that we don't need people in front of cameras, so to speak, like the old news crews. We need people who are managing our social media accounts, they're responding to requests, they're responding to people who are sending, you know, direct messages on the backside of Facebook or if it's our Instagram page or through Twitter. People need to answer these questions because sometimes the only thing our family has is wifi. And they need to be able to get the answer back to them. So we sent this out through our multiple media outlets throughout the communicate, throughout our communications department, social media input areas. And this has been super helpful for us to be able to reach out to them and then, you know, as also to campuses. And so we reached out to the principals, principals then sent it through their Twitters and then through their Facebook pages and then their Instagram. So, you know, it's just like the tentacles of the octopus. You kind of work all the messages down all the way to hopefully reaching folks that actually need the help. This has given us also the awareness piece for folks who are not experiencing homelessness. The ones who are actually doing okay during the pandemic, that actually have not had any significant issues. You know, those few people that like life hasn't really been interrupted, but they just don't know much outside their protective sphere. And so us sending this information on a regular basis has really opened up some folks' eyes and given them the opportunity to see what's going on in the community. And there are opportunities for them to help. You know, we see some of that, that opportunity with people doing fundraisers for us and people doing food drives and things for hygiene, you know, bringing them in. Like our typical groups years ago, like, you know, sports and whatnot, they, they didn't really work with our department, they just didn't feel like there was a need. But now we have a program called Tackle Hunger. And so they get into football games for free if they bring cans of food. And I think, man, we probably brought in about 20,000 pounds of food over like the last month from all these different games of, you know, these people bringing in food. Because at the end of the day, the message is it's Northeast ISD families helping other Northeast ISD families. You know, keeping it within our family environment and being able to support each other. So, Eileen, next one, please. So let's talk about money. Now, I'm not the expert on this because we don't have our money yet. And I know a lot of you don't have your money yet either. But I wanted to talk to you about what we are planning to do with our money. The first thing is, we keep getting hammered on this. And I'm pretty much in agreement with the idea of this is that this is one-time money, right? So we can spend it on something that is, you know, foundational to support a program that we don't have to worry about a reoccurring cost. But we also want to put people in place that's going to, that will help us for the future issues that we don't foresee, the fallout from majority of the evictions that are happening, you know, as they ramp up, the compounding issues of, of, you know, concerns with regards to the economy and the pressure and, you know, inflation. And what is that going to look like for our homeless numbers moving up from there as well? How do we fund it past 2025? You know, because we can spend the money on a position, but then at the end of it, I'm not firing this individual and I got to figure out how I'm going to do it, how I'm going to keep that position around. And I think the biggest piece is what do you, what do we do for step two? So after talking to some of our federal folks, you know, what I thought about doing is that we're going to look at our homeless liaison, adding an additional one, have them work in a caseload, but also having them focus part of their job. And it probably might have to be like 51% of their job when we're doing time and effort. So, you know, a little bit more than lunchtime on the half a day, they're going to be doing mental health related items. And a reason why I say that is because Title IV is directly related to mental health. And you can utilize that funding for that position. We use it currently for our crisis counselors, which is one of the other hats that I wear. We manage crisis counselors in our department. So I have 16 of those. And if several of them are funded under this system where they're able to work as counselors and they're directly related to mental health. So if I can do 51%, you know, mental health and then 49% homeless liaison and have them focus specifically their, their work with kiddos that are the most at risk, then it should be helpful for us to be able to have them in place and also continue the funding for them. Another piece that Michael Jones, one of our liaisons here, who manages our transportation, he's extraordinary at it, and he came up with the idea of expanding our boundaries. And I'll, I'll tell you what that means here in a second. I've got a good visual for it because if you don't know San Antonio and how we're like disjointedly set up with regards to all the puzzle pieces of how our county's set up, then you'll, you'll be surprised on how we even operate as a, as a whole community. It's kind of crazy because we have more than one mayor in the town. And then also we're looking at T-Mobile's program. And by no means am I promoting them as being the only one. They're just the first ones to come up with this plan. And they're the ones that I think we're going to run with because they, they have a pretty significant discount. And I'll go into details here about that one too. All right, Eileen, next one, please. So our mental health liaison, we're looking at, obviously, it's two-year support through ARP1 and then ARP2 funding. We're going to continue obviously with Title IV because our Title I money is wiped out at the moment. Well, I have my set aside money, which is for y'all, if you're not familiar with set aside, when we received the Texas Education for Children, Homeless Youth, the TEACHY grant is what we call it. We were joking about that earlier. So the TEACHY grant is, you know, we are mandated to have a set aside money from Title I. So we receive a certain amount on the side and that has been capped and we can't do anymore because I've got a couple liaisons that are funded with it as well. But we have wiped out almost all that money for summertime engagement and summertime programs. And that's like district-wide. And so all those re-engagement things that you are all doing, your Title I funds are probably wiped out from that as well. A lot of that had to happen because we had to put things in place for re-engagement and acceleration prior to some of the extra dollars even making it to us because we had to pay salaries. And so people utilized your Title I and then supplanted with extra money. So knowing that Title I is wiped out, we had to look at a different option. And that's why I'm running with the mental health piece for the Title IV instead of trying to go back and use Title I. The targeted intervention, we're looking at DAP, which is a discretionary alternative educational placement, which is alternative kiddos, our kiddos who get busted for, you know, fighting or for drugs or whatever it might be, and are placed at the alternative center. I figured there's no better place to start than the worst cases, you know. I mean, what, what more at-risk kid could you have than, you know, a homeless kiddo who's in an alternative placement for, for discipline infraction, where they're removed from their campus? Not only are they homeless, but now they're kind of campusless and they're, they're stuck over at the alternative center. So I know that the, they're under a lot of stress, they're, they're distressed and, you know, their fight or flight, you know, mechanisms and their brain functions aren't working correctly. And, you know, you see all those synapses breaking right in front of you where they're going to have to retrain their brain. If you're familiar with bases, adverse childhood experiences, I mean, they're doing all the fragmentation right in front of your eyes. So if we're able to, you know, intervene with that, with, you know, mental health support, getting them involved with T-Chat, you know, looking at a living situation and evaluation, you know, how do we go about this case management for these kiddos? And I think that would be the best template to be able to replicate in other districts is looking at someone who would be able to address those kiddos. Because the way I look at it, if we don't spend the money and the effort now, you're going to be doing it in prison money later in the future. You know, it's either rehab or prison money. And that's not money that I want to spend. I'd rather do it in prevention where we have someone who's a productive member of society versus someone who we're using as a reactionary. You know, it's a reaction for us to have to lock them up because at some point, they may do something so heinous that we can't do anything but lock them up. The prevention is the key and also eliminating kids from going into the pipeline of prison.
Before we move on, I was just wondering if you could repeat for anyone who may have joined us a little bit later, what T-Chat stands for and just telling us a little bit about that program.
Sure thing. So T-Chat is our partnership with the UT Health Science Center. And it stands for Texas Child Health Accessing Through Telemedicine. So it allows us to have masters levels of psychiatrists do telemedicines and counseling and initial diagnoses and med management. It's funded through the state. We were one of the pilot districts and that is a partnership of ours that has been going like gangbusters for us. We're actually considered a super user. So it's, we've done it more than any other district. We send more referrals. And I think as of like last year, we ended up with like 900 kiddos that were served through T-Chat in our district. we've done it more than any other district. We send more referrals. And I think as of like last year, we ended up with like 900 kiddos that were served through T Chat in our district. And it's telling and it's free. So they receive eight to 10 visits and then they receive referrals out for additional support should they need it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so here is our odd hodgepodge of school districts. It's kind of a hot mess. And so this is why this is where, you know, Mr. Jones thought of the idea of what if what would it look like if we extend our boundaries? So extending our boundaries means for us is like taking, for example, you see like the dark green on the left hand on the screen, you know, that's Northside ISD. Northeast is the kind of the tan one on the right. You know, if we moved our boundary line and not not officially, like we're obviously not usurping some of their territory. We're not like, you know, going into a game of risk here. It is where us just pushing our transportation boundary. So if we have a route where we have a kiddo that's just right outside the line, we don't need to coordinate it with the other district. We can just drive across the line and go and pick them up. What we've come to find is that we have multiple apartment complexes and homes that are around our boundary lines that we do consider, we do transport a considerable amount of kiddos within those areas. But in our city, what we would typically do, should we not have done this, is that we would send a request to the other district. They then would set up transportation on their end. And we have two hubs where all of our buses meet each other. We swap kids in the morning. And then go to the respective districts. And then we do that again in the afternoon and swap them back and then go back to their 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 homes. And if we were able to extend those boundaries, then they wouldn't have to do the swap. And what that means is that it will take like, you know, 45 minutes off of the time that they have to travel. So if you look all the way down there where it says Somerset ISD or Southwest ISD or East Central. You know, San Antonio is really big, you know, it's not like Boston. Boston is straight up and down. San Antonio is wide. So this is we're looking at a geographic area about 26 square miles. And so a ride across town is about 30 minutes without any traffic. So if you're on a bus, you're traveling on an average of 18 miles an hour. It takes you that kid's gonna be on the bus for two hours, sometimes almost three hours, just one way. So we try to eliminate some of those issues with them. And so the our funding for us would be is like we're hiring additional bus drivers, assistants, hopefully with our ARP2 funding to be able to extend some of those routes and also maybe add a couple extra bus drivers. You know, the the issue is is that we need to have extra money in the pot to be able to pay them more than other districts because everybody's in competition for bus drivers right now. We have a huge shortage, as I know the rest of the country has. But that's, you know, our obstacle to overcome. But if we can use some of that money, it might be able to entice more drivers to come to us. Or maybe leave the field that they're in and come come work for us part time. I'll put some flair in there. So the last one, this is their T-Mobile cell phone pilot. Okay, so our superintendent just approved this plan this last week on Monday morning. And I had met with them, the T-Mobile reps a couple of times with our technology folks and also with their salespeople. I will tell you, it is sales, so everybody's a little bit pushy. Everybody wants their dollars now, but obviously they hadn't been paying attention to the legislature because they didn't realize and nobody in Texas had received their money yet. So I told them, you're just gonna have to be patient. But they did offer something that I couldn't walk away from, which was basically a $29 a month phone for a total of $700 per phone. That it's SIPA, which is the Child Internet Protection Act. I had to look it up before and I didn't know what it was until like a week ago. But basically, it's a filtering system that takes away a majority of the adult content that's online. And they would give us, it's an iPhone SD or it's an Android device. It's very similar. It gives them unlimited text calling and data. It can act as a hotspot up to four to five additional devices. And it also allows us as the mobile device manager to push messages to the actual phone itself from our our side of the house. So what we're looking at is a, you know, service plan of two years. Yeah, we're still working out some of the caveats as to, we're not going to try to, you know, loan it out to them and then try to expect it back anytime soon. They would have it for a period of two years. What we know about our families is that when they become homeless and they don't and they 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 become housed for a period of time. Many cases, they become homeless again, and we don't want to take that communication away from them because that might be the only thing that's helping them find resources or access whatever they need to access to get into a situation where they're able to, you know, find a new job or talk to their employer. We're looking at, we're planning on letting them use that phone for two years. The phone comes to them for free. The service plan, we pay for upfront and any loss or damage in phone, you know, it's going to be on, it's going to be their responsibility. And should they not be able to purchase another phone, we may have a few extras on the side to help them out. I know we're going to have some issues with regards to families wanting another one, or they just lost it immediately and they want another one. We'll work through those. But what we all know, working in this business with these families, is that they're in dire need of communication that's consistent, a solid phone number that they someone can reach them over a long period of time. That, you know, is going to allow for them to have callbacks from employers and they don't have to have issues about minutes. They don't have to go hunting for Wi-Fi spots because they are a Wi-Fi spot and they also have unlimited service. The the drawback for them, and this is one thing I'm kind of concerned about, is that they can't download any app they want onto it. They won't have their Apple account or their Android, you know, app app account. It'll all be managed by us. So they'll have a phone. It'll be set up with the numbers that we want to have set up in it. It'll have the apps on there that we want them to have and we'll have they'll have internet access. They just can't enter like they just can't go to like a lot of adult stuff. Which is fine because it's we're the ones managing it. And that's not my concern. It's just more of like helping them understand it's that they need to utilize this and they need to have that with them and don't lose it. And if if they feel it's, you know, we know that there's a lot of families that will protect it with their dear life. So we want to be sure that those families are the ones we get it to and then the ones that, you know, we just obviously don't really know who's going to abuse it or whatnot or try to sell it or do something with it. But at the end of the day, nobody really wants to sell like an iPhone SD. I mean, it's like, there's nothing wrong with it, but it's like seven versions, you know, different than the brand new one. It's not a super fancy one, but it has all the bells and whistles that they need. And it's super productive and it's kind of like a, it's kind of bulletproof, too. So that version of phone, I think, is going to be the best for us. So as we pilot this, what I'm hoping is that we're going to show some success where we can use this to inform our legislators and go back to Eileen's, you know, point of we want this to not be one-time dollars. We want this to be like in this 800 million to be in an annual thing that we look at doing this for all school districts and all folks that need it. Because if we can show success here, we can say, hey, look, federal federal guideline, you know, creators. We don't need to have such rigid rules. This phone is not considered a gift. This is a tool for them. It's for them to have connectivity and it's a necessary thing. All right, next one, please.
Tyler, just one quick question before I was wondering if you could just provide a little insight for everyone here, just in case anyone might be interested in implementing a similar pilots in their school districts, how you were able, like, in the most practical way, you could explain how you were able to make the connection with T-Mobile to just like literally just how you got this initially set up.
Yeah, honestly, it's salespeople had been been working with our tech, our IT department. When we were in the middle of the pandemic, we needed a Wi-Fi hotspots. So we had purchased, I think, 3,000 of them about a year and a half ago. And so the rep at the time had worked with us to do those purchases. And then they were looking for other, like, do they wanted us to purchase again? They're like, we don't need them anymore. Like, we're not doing it again. It was expensive, you know, a chunk of money. However, though, they said, we do have other options. They knew that the ARP money was coming in. They knew the flexibility of it. So they they actually had reached out to us. But I think I was the first one to to see the potential in it, at least in as far as I know. Talking to our regional folks in Region 20, that no one had heard of what what they were offering and what kind of discounted rate they were offering. So I know that I can send you the flyer that they gave me initially and you can, you know, send it out to all the attendees if you'd like and they they can reach out to them. And like I say, I am not an advocate or excuse me, I'm not promoting T-Mobile. They just happened to be the one that was like the first one to come to us. I want to make sure I don't have any connection to them. I don't get a commission from this. They just happened to be the the ones that had reached out and had had put together a plan specifically for us with a mobile device manager that I felt comfortable with because after our tech security people looked through it. Every every electronic device can be subverted and converted. A kid can work a way around it to to use it for something it's not intended to be used for. And so we can do our best to prevent that. But at some point, some kid's going to do it. So they have an acceptable use policy that they have to sign every year, which every school district does. But we made a second one that the parents in the guardian and or unaccompanied youth is going to have to sign. Because I just don't want another parent coming to a board meeting going, hey, look at this phone and my kid's on porn and see it's right here. That's what happened before. When it came to like all the devices that are out in the community because we're all locked at home and we were handing them out left and right. Some of them didn't have any filters on them and kids were able to access things, you know, but things happen. So we're going to do our best and I'll be happy to provide all that stuff to you and people can use at their own risk and take a look at the, you know, the program at their own risk as well.
Awesome. We'll be sure to send it out. And I will say, we got a comment in the chat saying that she hopes that you guys are also providing phone covers and cases, just to make sure that they're able to keep safe and that the emergency broadband benefit is another great program, is another great federal program that can be used help in broadband bills and home bills or mobile bills, et cetera. And Tyler, we are getting compliments on your presentation and on the the suggestions that you're making, that they're wonderful. So just just in case you needed a a confidence booster mid mid presenting.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right, next one, please. All right, next one. I'm sorry, that was just my transition one there. Okay, so I talked a little bit about handle with Carolina. Are we good on time?
Um, we have about four minutes left technically, but I think maybe not these hours. And of course, everyone have questions or any last many questions, feel free to put them in the chat box, but you can also email either of us at the end. If you have anything that comes up later.
Okay, so this is our partnership with law enforcement and they come to a crime scene. They identify a kid who is a witness to a traumatic event. They send an email with an app that we created. It goes directly to me and my chief and also a counselor, the guidance counselor director. Then the campus, I send it to the campus the next morning and they know when a kid has been exposed to a traumatic event. Just think about a kiddo who's been exposed to a lot of those things. They're not going to act right when they come to school the next day. You're going to put their head down. The teacher doesn't know what's going on with them. There's going to be a lot of issues with that kiddo. They're going to put them directly into a disciplinary event. This helps us prevent that. Helps us give them the opportunity to be able to be taken care of. They go to the counseling office, they go see the nurse, they go get a snack, they go take a nap. Versus Johnny, get your head up, Johnny, get your head up. I told you to pick your head up, right? And Johnny just saw something horrendous in that before. So just Google Handle With Care. It comes from West Virginia. We implemented it here in San Antonio with citywide, all the school districts involved, all the law enforcement agencies are involved. Incredible program. This is something that's going to be beneficial to your your district and it's basically free. They're more than happy to help at the center, but email me about it. I'll send you all the stuff on it. There's some great informational videos online that we've created and people have done for us. Salute America has a a great video of all the districts and when we initially piloted it here. So, okay, next one, please. All right, so T Chat and I think we can probably skip to the next one. I've talked about this a couple of times. But this is, you know, LPC is counseling, med management, and that's the biggest thing is like initial diagnoses. That our concern is that we have a lot of mental health concerns with kiddos that really need a lot of assistance. However, though, they're not taking the right prescriptions. They're not, they've never been diagnosed. So they're taking a prescription that is detrimental to their behavior. So they need to have a reevaluation or they have need to have an initial evaluation. This is where we've been able to bridge the gap in a lot of those things. So I encourage you to take a look at the UT Health Science Center's T Chat webpage. I can send links to all this stuff to you and see how you can get something like this started or if you already have it in your in your state as well. Next one, please.
Oh, and just so everyone knows, UT stands for University of Texas.
Yeah, not Tennessee. All right.
If you don't know, I actually live in Texas also. So definitely not Tennessee, definitely Texas.
Come horns, you're in Austin. All right, so recovering students now, what? So we got them all back. I look, we've been to all the do these different programs across the nation. I've traveled quite a bit to go see what's best. What we found is everybody needs a prescription as to what exactly they they need to be assessed for. So I know most y'all know this, but if you could think about how you bring in people if your initial intake, are you are you looking at eyeglasses? Are you looking at dental health? Are you looking at skincare? And I mean, like, are they like their hygiene, you know, are they have clean clothes, all those things, work your way from top to bottom. And then look at the the case management piece. We're doing week to week, small measurable goals and consistent communication. Hopefully, those phones are going to help out. Student connection with other programs on campuses, hooking them up with any type of, you know, athletics or in anonymous, like in a sport. Just with like coaches who want to mentor and those are usually the first ones to go to and then getting other teachers who want to be involved. But also looking at the student to student program, are all of our campuses in the district are student to student. It was initially started for military kids that were highly mobile because their parents are moving around. We've we've allowed it to be open up to all kids who are mobile. So anybody who's brand new to the campus, which are kids who attended all year last year, but now are brand new sophomores and they were they were freshmen last year, but never stepped foot on campus. We're using that program to help reengage them, too. And that you don't have to classify the kid as homeless and identify him as as homeless. You just say, here's another kid. Put in the program. And that way, you know, you're obviously you're helping out the kiddo, but they have not been, you know, excluded or, you know, identified differently. I think that was my last one. I could be wrong.
Yes, yep. So we have the end of the presentation. Thank you, Tyler, so, so, so much for all the wonderful information that you provided today. And I'm sure I'm not the only person who thinks that we've been getting wonderful comments in the chat box. Just saying how impactful this has been in 45 minutes. So thank you so much for that. Just one thing before we go, before we sign off, and I know we're a little bit over time, everyone, but please bear with us if you are able to. But we have someone saying that they're interested in more information about the mental health services because they don't have anything like that in their district. So I was wondering if there's anything that you that you could possibly share for like someone who might want to implement a similar thing in their district in an in another state.
You know, some of this is a little bit outside my pay grade, but I can tell you at least where to start, you know, look at some of the university hospitals and how they provide mental health support for indigent individuals. How do they how do they pay pay for those services for those folks? And that pay structure is what's going to let you kind of do the the hunt to find what are other resources or excuse me, what other venues that that money might be able to be used for. And they can definitely, if if you're really that in tune with like legislators and you're able to inform them on on mental health supports. You can look at how the funding structure is here in Texas and then take a look how you can implement it based on the funding structure that's currently in your state. And see how some of those funds could either be replicated or diverted from other areas to be able to support the initiatives that you want to put in place if it's not already there. Sometimes these things are already exists, but no one is advertising them because it's just very much siloed and it's maybe one or it's like understaffed and underfunded and or they they're overfunded but understaffed, you know, and they have the availability to add more staff members. They just don't know how to do it. And once, you know, like T Chat, they had no idea what they were going to do when they they got in partnership with us until all of a sudden, like we, you know, the other districts maybe had 100 referrals and we had 800. Because we we knew mental health was a key piece for us. And so we blew it up. And so we became like the state model for the, you know, for how to utilize this program. And they built to scale. So as they bill healthcare, they have the money to be able to put back into hiring more folks. So the the funding is there. It's just really how the state wants to allocate it. And utilizing current practices that are in place will help you justify the funding for those for those programs in your state. You know, we can, we can try to help, you know, provide additional data. If you really want to do a deep dive on it, I can put you in contact with Rena Parton Wally. She's the she's a director for UT or for UT Health Science Center psychiatric programs and also managing the T Chat program.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much for that, Tyler. And Tyler, would you mind me sending your email in the chat box? Just in case anyone wants to snag it and get in contact with you afterwards.
Yeah, please do.
Okay. All right, I am dropping it in the chat right now. So if you would like to connect with Tyler or asking many further questions, just snag that up right now. And of course, if you don't manage to get it, feel free to email me and I will do my best to put you in contact. Or I will put you in contact with Tyler, as long as he doesn't get annoyed by me sending him too many emails.
Never annoyed. Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Well, thank you so much again, Tyler. We we've gotten even more comments since I I mentioned it. Just thanking you for your wonderful presentation. We even got a thank you from back home in Texas from Waco, from Waco ISD. Thank you so much. And thank you, everyone. Thank you, our wonderful attendees for joining us and staying with us. I hope that everyone was able to take something from or lots of things from this presentation. And of course, feel free to re-watch the webinar if you need to get anything else. Thank you all so much again, and I hope everyone has a wonderful rest of your day. Thank you all so much again, and I hope everyone has a wonderful rest of your day. Bye-bye.